So this is a request to rezone the property located at 711 Marshall from R16 High Density Single Family Residential to GBD, General Business District. This is the site of the former Cushing Memorial Hospital, which has been vacant for several months now. So the applicant is the Board of County Commissioners of the city of, or of Leavenworth County. Again, they are requesting to rezone it to General Business District. So the rezoning is being requested to allow for reuse of this building as a mix of county offices and medical offices for private healthcare providers. The intended use of this is less intensive than the previous use of a hospital in the, in terms of there will be less traffic, operation will be between normal business hours instead of a 24/7 capacity like the hospital was. So at this point, no expansion of the building footprint is proposed. The existing building was constructed as a hospital in the late 1800s, and there had been several building additions since that time. The hospital did close in October of 2020. It is considered a legal nonconforming use right now, operating in the R16 zoning district. Currently, R16 zoning regulations would not allow the, the use of a hospital either by rights or with issuance of a special use permit. So just to kind of go over nonconforming uses, any nonconforming use of a structure may be changed to another nonconforming use if that nonconforming, as an exception granted by the Board of Zoning Appeals. Or when a nonconforming use is abandoned for a period of 24 consecutive months, any subsequent use must comply with the regulations of the zoning district. So if it's abandoned for less than 24 months, you can continue on with another nonconforming use. Given the size of this building and the proposed multiple tenant use between potential medical uses, county uses, I know there's talk of moving the council on aging into this building. And working with the applicant, we felt that just going forward with the rezoning was the clearest and most transparent way to move forward so that we would avoid any sort of potential need for multiple exceptions, or you get one use in here and then four years later, another use wants to come in, how do you kind of count that 24-month period? It would be sort of a complicated situation if you were going on exceptions and that type of thing. So staff felt that just a rezoning request would be the clearest move forward. So there is, you are familiar with the Medical Arts Building, that's just a couple of blocks north of here, right off of Spruce Street. That property was also zoned R16 and was rezoned to General Business District a couple of years ago. At that time, the, there was a psychiatric hospital that had intended to move into that building. That never materialized, but that zoning is in place, that General Business District. And I believe at this point, a church is utilizing that building for some services that they're holding. The Medical Office Building, that's also a couple of blocks north of here, that's currently occupied by doctors' offices, that's actually zoned R16 also, so that's also a nonconforming use. It would not be allowed in this zoning district. I'm not sure exactly how that was built without being rezoned, or there was no sort of exception or anything granted for that. But if that were to come forth at this time, that would require a rezoning as well. So as it stands, since this is zoned R16, really, there's nothing that can be done with this property except for single-family uses. And so without a variance, or an exception, I'm sorry, to allow another nonconforming use or rezoning, the property would have to sit vacant. So just to go through the conditions of determination, the first is the character of the neighborhood. Again, the subject property is the site of the former Cushing Memorial Hospital, that's currently vacant. To the north is a multi-story medical office building. To the south is the Carroll Mansion, occupied by the Leavenworth County Historic Society. And two blocks to the north is the former Medical Arts Building, which was rezoned to General Business District in 2017. The remainder of the neighborhood is single-family residential. Second is the zoning and use of properties nearby. All the surrounding properties are zoned R16 High Density Single Family Residential, again, except for the site of the former Medical Arts Building, which is zoned GBD. The next is the suitability of the subject property for the uses to which it has been restricted. The subject property was built in the late 1800s as a hospital and has functioned as such since that time until its recent closure in October of last year. The building has housed medical uses consistently since construction and it's unsuited for single-family residential use as it stands. The next is the extent to which removal of the restrictions will detrimentally affect nearby property. The proposed rezoning should have little detrimental effect upon surrounding properties. The subject building has housed medical uses since its construction and provides adequate parking facilities for such uses. It is anticipated that the neighborhood will experience a decrease in traffic as the building will not be used on a 24/7 schedule in the same manner that the hospital was used, and there is no detrimental effect anticipated on the nearby properties. The next is the length of time the subject property has remained vacant as zoned. Again, the property was used as a hospital since it was constructed in the late 1800s until its recent closure in October of last year. The next is the relative gain to economic development, public health, safety, and welfare by the reduction of the value of the landowner's property as compared to the hardship imposed by such reduction upon the individual landowner. The proposed rezoning will have a positive for needed health services while preserving and adaptively reusing an historic building. Staff, staff does recommend approval of the rezoning request. The next is the conformance of the requested change to the adopted or recognized comprehensive land use plan being utilized for institutional uses on the future land use map, which would include, which would include hospital or medical type uses. And so therefore, staff would find that the proposed use would be in conformance with the goals of that comprehensive plan. And the final is any other such factors that may be relevant to a particular proposed amendment, and there are no other factors to note. So after the required public notices were sent to property owners within 200 feet, we did receive one letter in opposition to this, which was sent into our office late on Friday, and that was sent to you all via email from the Leavenworth Historical Society, so you do have a copy of that. So with that, the applicant is here. David Van Paris is representing the Leavenworth County, and I can answer any questions that you might have.
All right, so Commissioners, questions of staff?
So the rezoning and approval of that is in nothing with conflict with anything we're looking at Leavenworth in the future for that area?
Correct, it's in conformance with the, the future land use.
Because the issue is trying to keep things maybe in harmony with the area with the medical facility, but I don't think that's a, I understand a sensitivity of that, but we, I don't think we could do that, to keep it in a, that environment conducive to it. Okay.
Yeah.
So really, we just have, I mean, essentially two, or two options, right? So either we use the building as it exists, or we have to end up tearing it down, and since it belongs to the city, we'd have to put the bill for that as well?
It, it belongs to the county. So again, since it's zoned, single-family residential, we're really limited in what types of uses can even occur in single-family, even with a special use permit. So again, as it stands, there's really no productive use of this building with the current zoning. It really does need to be rezoned to something else to allow reuse of that building.
And then, sorry?
Yeah, and that, that's kind of one of my biggest concerns. Again, I discussed this with you earlier, full disclosure. My, my wife is now the president of the historical side of the board over there behind, behind Cushing, and it seems like the city at times has bad luck with, you know, opening things up. Okay, we're going to rezone this building for general use, and then anybody and everybody could apply to go into that building. I think that's, I, I know that's my concern. You don't want to, you know, rezone it, and then all of a sudden, you've got a welding shop show up in half the building, or an auto repair shop in half the building, or something like that that's going to disrupt the neighborhood.
Sure.
So I know that's one of my concerns, and, you know, it's, that, it is what it is, though. So.
I, I see it as a rezone, or you have a vacant building there for the next 40 to 80 years. I hate to be that simplistic about it, but I think that's where we're at.
Yeah, unfortunately, to address your concern.
You know what's coming in behind it.
Yeah, to address your concern, unfortunately, there's no, like, medical office zoning. We're sort of limited in our zoning district options, and so, you know, the commercial zoning districts allow for a wide variety of uses by design, but you're correct, it, you know, it does allow for multiple uses, not just medical office. And that's kind of what we're, you know, the framework that we have to work with.
Test 22, you know, it's.
Right.
Sure.
Do we know what Lansing rezoned, the old Lansing City Town Square, whatever they're calling it, over north of, I guess, Exchange Bank in Lansing? It's my understanding, the way they rezoned it, allowed for the city to come in and review each applicant that was going to go there. It was zoned for businesses, but it wasn't General Business District, where just any business can go in there. The city had to essentially review it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure, I'm not familiar with Lansing's zoning practices in terms of that.
I mean, that'd be great if we could do something like that.
At least say yea or nay on the potential.
Right, right, exactly.
All right, questions for the applicant? Or is there anything that the applicant can provide us that we just haven't asked a question yet? Sorry, if you could send your name and address, please.
My name is David Van Paris. I'm the county councillor for Leavenworth, Kansas. I use the address of the courthouse, 300 Walnut. Commissioners, I really don't have much to add to your staff report. I think they've thoroughly analyzed this, and I think they've accurately analyzed it. This whole process started when the county discussed with the city, the county's plan to use the former Cushing building that was donated by St. Luke's to the county. The county did not want that building to sit vacant. The county accepted the donation, knowing that there would be obligations to maintain the building and use the building. Currently, there is no plan, Commissioner Murphy, for any welding shops, retail stores, or anything such as that to go into that facility. The plan is to locate some county offices. We've had negotiations with one healthcare provider that would utilize the entirety of the third floor, possibly the fourth. The remainder of that building will, in all likelihood, in fact, will house county offices. The county's already retained architects to begin the redesign of the interior of the building for that purpose. So while I share your concern about opening the door, if that door was ever opened, it's now closed. All I can offer is this, it's unfortunate that that building's no longer a hospital. It was in this community for a long time. However, it's gone, and I think it's in everyone's interest to find some useful purpose for that building. The county has plans for that. County staff has been in discussion with your staff on this. We are not interested, this is all of our community, we're not interested in anything that would be detrimental to the neighborhood. We feel it will provide beneficial use to the community, and we intend to be good stewards of that building.
Questions for this applicant? No, thank you very much. All right, at this time, I will open the public hearing. I understand we have.
Okay, I know Lisa Weekly is on, representing the Leavenworth County Historic Society, and would like to speak. So Lisa, if you have some comments that you wanted to share at this time?
Yes, thank you. My name is Lisa Weekly. I'm at 1304 Fifth Avenue. I'd like to thank the commission for allowing me to address them tonight on behalf of the historical society that is at 1128 Fifth Avenue. We are opposed to this rezoning request that's at 711 Marshall. Despite the long-term presence of Cushing Hospital and later the office, medical office buildings that were a nonconforming use on that, the character of this neighborhood has been predominantly single-family and townhouse in nature. The rezoning of the property to General Business District allows too much variety of commercial, retail, service businesses, wholesale, storage, that are normally found in a commercially developed district of the city. These uses are incompatible with the current residential neighborhood. Hospitals, medical, dental offices are normally compatible with General Business District, so that we do recognize that these have been there in the long-term past, but they've been there also since these zoning regulations have been in effect. We'd like the commission to consider not just the present needs of this requested use, but the impact that this may have on any future development, especially if the county decides to leave this property again, as they have done in two previous properties. The General Business District holds too much of variety that would have a negative impact on the property values of this, the general nature of the residential area. Commercial traffic would increase on residential neighborhoods if you open this for General Business District. We see this as a spot zoning request that falls outside of the city's economic development pool, as stated in the comprehensive plan. And even stated earlier, the county, as the new owner of the property, would have government offices and facilities that is, that are already compatible and allowable in an R16-zoned area. If they decided they, to use it for assisted living, nursing homes, senior housing, that have been in sync with discussions in the past deliberations for uses for this business that the county has had, those are all compatible uses under its present zoning of R16. So for these reasons, we'd like you to not allow the rezoning of this property and recommend that it is not rezoned to the city commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Weekly. Questions for Ms. Weekly? Any other, anybody out there in the public also have questions or comments? Please indicate on the chat function. I guess not. All right, so if there's no one, no, no one else wishing to speak, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Thoughts, or Commissioners? Any other additional concerns or considerations or thoughts about this proposal?
Well, looking at the issue of greater good, of what's in the best interest of use and not abuse and letting it, especially use, and what we've been hearing, what we've been told on is proposed use. I mean, it appears to be a win-win instead of letting it be where it's at. I think the rezoning is a, is a win-win for us and the community, and open it up and with proper use of tenants as proposed, so. It certainly seems in the best interest at this moment, and there's nothing better at this moment that's being offered.
I am in agreement with Claude. I think we need to pass the net a little wider on possibilities for the building, so that's what I'm, I'm.
Chris?
I, I still have my.
Haven't convinced you?
I mean, it is what it is.
Okay. I mean, there's, I think it's, you know, there's pluses and minuses.
Yeah, well, you're exactly right. You're exactly right. I mean, there's plus and minuses both ways, and it's just, it's, it's the unknown, so.
All right. If there are no other thoughts or comments, we have three options: recommend approval of the rezoning request from R1-TAC 6 to GBD to the city commission; recommend denial of the rezoning request; or table the issue for additional information slash consideration. I will accept the motion one way or the other.
I will make a motion that we approve the rezoning from R1 to GBD at 711 Marshall Street.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll say.
Thank you. Right, those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed? The vote is five, the one is passed.
Okay, so again, this one will be heard at the May 25th City Commission meeting. That's a Tuesday at 7 o'clock, and this does begin the 14-day protest period, protest petition period as required by statute for this public hearing.
What was the date against, Julie?
May 25th.
All righty, time for the next action, and I understand that the next three actions are all grouped together, so we'll.
Yep, they are all together. We have a rezoning request and two associated plaques, so we'll go through the rezoning requests, have that discussion and action, and then we can kind of talk about the plaques separately after that, since they're just a little bit.
And I understand the applicant's online with.
Yep, the applicant is, we've got the applicant here, and then we have representatives of the current owners of the property. It's currently under contract to be purchased by the developer, so the current owners and their representative are online as well, so.
All right, so if we go 2021-TAC 11-TAC rezoning for 5136 Lakewood, Lakeview Drive, staff report, please, when you get it up, no rush.
Situated. Okay, so again, this is a request to rezon the property located at 5136 Lakeview Drive from R16 High Density Single Family Residential to GBD General Business District. So this is a, an 11.8 acre property, and the property is owned by Sandra Harrison, Donna De Mette, Gloria Mercer, and Darlene Lynch, and is under contract to be purchased by Forrester Holdings, who is acting as the applicant and agent for the project. Currently, there's one single-family home on the property. So the rezoning is being requested, being requested to allow for commercial development of the property, as it is directly adjacent to the Eisenhower Road corridor. A Culver's restaurant is planned for the southeast portion of the property. At this time, there are no other users identified for the rest of the property, but it's anticipated that the developer will get that Culver's up and going, and then work on development of the rest of the property as those opportunities present themselves. So site plans were reviewed at the April 15th, 2021 Development Review Committee meeting. There were several items discussed related to traffic, access, internal circulation, stormwater, and utilities that were discussed. Those are all items that we would expect to be addressed at or before the time of building permit. They're not really pertinent so much to the rezoning. Just kind of mentioned that those were discussed with the applicant, and they are working on all of those. So let me get up site plan here for everybody. For us, there we go. Okay. So, and again, we've got the associated preliminary and final plaque that are associated with this project on the agenda after this item. So just to go through the conditions of determination, the first is the character of the neighborhood. The subject property is, again, 11.8 acres in size and occupied by one single-family home. It is located directly along the Eisenhower corridor. To the east is the Armed Forces Insurance Office Building. To the east of that is the Leavenworth County Health Department and the Hallmark Cards Factory. To the west is the Frontier Community Credit Union, the Woods Gas Station, and Dillon's Grocery Store. To the north is a 26.6 acre single-family residential lot with additional single-family homes further to the north. And then to the south, across Eisenhower, is a strip commercial center, and that is in the city of Lansing. The next is the zoning and use of properties nearby. The properties to the north immediately across Lakeview Drive to the east are zoned R19 Medium Density Single Family Residential. Properties to the west and further east are zoned OBD, Office Business District. Property further to the west is zoned GBD, General Business District. And property to the south is inside the city limits of Lansing and is zoned PUD, Planned Unit Development. The next is the suitability of the subject property for the uses to which it has been restricted. Again, the subject property, property is occupied by one single-family home. As the property is located immediately adjacent to the Eisenhower Road corridor, which is a major four-lane thoroughfare, and does experience a high volume of traffic, and is adjoined by commercial and office uses along the corridor, single-family residential is not the most appropriate use of the property. The next is the extent to which removal of the restrictions will detrimentally affect nearby property. The proposed rezoning should have little detrimental effect upon surrounding properties. Again, the property is primarily surrounded by commercial and office use with single-family use to the north. The existing home to the north is approximately 565 feet from the property line, and screening and buffering would be required at the time of development of the northern portion of this property should, or if and when that develops with any commercial uses. The next is the length of time the subject properties remain vacant and zoned. The subject property has always been single-family residential in nature. The next is the relative gain to economic development, public health, safety, and welfare by the reduction of the value of the landowner's property as compared to the hardship imposed by such reduction upon the individual landowner. The proposed rezoning will have a positive effect on the economic development of the city of, the city and the region with added commercial uses, and will increase the value of the subject property through development as a commercial site. The next is the recommendation of permanent or professional staff. Staff does recommend approval of this rezoning request. The next is the conformance of the requested change to the adopted or recognized comprehensive land use plan being utilized by the city. This area is identified as appropriate for commercial uses on the future land use map, and so this would be in conformance with that future land use plan. And the next is any other such factors that may be relevant to a particular amendment. There are no other factors of note. So again, after we sent the required public notices to property owners within 200 feet within the city limits, and then statute actually requires us to notify within 1,000 feet outside of city limits, so they're on the south side of Eisenhower, we're to notify within 1,000 feet, we did receive communication from one individual in opposition to the rezoning request. So again, we have the applicant and developer here, the current owners of the property and their representative are online as well, that I know of.
Could you summarize the one individual who was opposed to this? Since there's no written report, did they provide you a written thoughts, or is this a phone call?
It was general phone calls and email correspondence. I, I believe there are representatives of this individual online that I saw log in, so they can speak to it during the public comment period. But I believe it involves the property to the north and some title information that was found, and the, the various title work that was done on this. So we can discuss it a little more when we get to the public hearing, but just to kind of summarize the city's position, we did speak with the city that the city is not in the position of enforcing individual title disputes or agreements. That's strictly between two property owners. It's really the city's place to only consider the factors that are laid out in state statute and the development regulations.
Thank you. All right, questions of staff, Commissioners? All right, so if we could, I mean, I've got a couple of questions for the applicant, so if, sir, if you wouldn't mind identifying yourself and providing your address, please.
Yes, sir. My name is Mark Schuler, and my address is 16290 Northwest 126th Street in Platt City, Missouri.
All right, so before I ask you, do you have anything that would you like to add to with the staff report, or anything else that we haven't taken into consideration yet?
No, other than born and raised in Leavenworth and retired Air Force Colonel, retired in 2014. I own two Culver's restaurants right now in Platt City, Missouri, and Lawrence, Kansas. Leavenworth was actually, as my hometown, was my very first territory that I had back in 2014 with Culver's, 2015, and I could not find real estate. And as I opened in Platt City first, and then I purchased an existing location in Lawrence, I've been searching for the last six years to find a location in Leavenworth which was suitable for a Culver's restaurant, worked closely with city staff in helping identify potential properties, city commissioners, et cetera, over the period of time. And this property, looking at a broader development kind of, you know, we opened our scope a little bit, looking at a potential tract that would make sense, 4th Street. Fourth Street, you know, there's not, just not a lot of opportunities available there. And so the Eisenhower corridor, looking at the zoning, the use plan, zoning plan that the city and county Eisenhower fits with those kind of things. And so again, that's why we think it's an appropriate zoning use, and it would be a great development opportunity for Leavenworth.
Great. So, thank you for the summary. I, my questions kind of revolve around that, the previous meeting that was conducted with the city's planning staff. My assumption is you've seen the results of that particular meeting. Is there anything in that, the recommendations or requirements, that present an issue to you?
No, in fact, in our works with Public Works and all of the issues, and Julie can certainly speak to this more, but all of the plans and everything that we've gotten from a civil engineering standpoint, everything that we came into that meeting with, with our site plan, is pretty much where our site plan is now. And in working with Public Works, I think some of the Public Works comments were at the beginning of the meeting as opposed to the conclusion of the meeting. And so we are on track to break ground next month on the property following closing. And so everything is moving along nicely with the project. And again, we're hopeful, and working with, my, my real estate broker is Lock &amp; Company, I'm out of Kansas City, one of the most major developers in the Kansas City market who are assisting me. We have not done any marketing of the rest of the property at this point, but we believe there'll be some opportunities there as we look for additional users.
Great, thank you. Other questions for the applicant? Julie, I know in the report from the other committee that there was a discussion about having a traffic impact study being done. Has that, do you know that's been launched yet?
I, and Mark's been on talking to Public Works, but it's my understanding that at this point, it is not needed. That may be needed in the future as the rest of the site develops, but I think where they lay into this, that it's not needed at this point with just this one lot being proposed for development right now. But again, going forward, depending on what's proposed in the future, that may come up again.
Thanks. I mean, to me, that was really the only thing that stood out in the result of that meeting was the fact that traffic flow into and out of the proposed, your proposed block there on the corner was an issue, so...
Yes, sir. And with that, that was in looking at the overall development as opposed to specifically the Culvers piece of this, and certainly, you know, that'll be readdressed as we do go forward with additional development, so...
Alright, thank you, sir. Other questions for the applicant or staff before I open up the public hearing? No, thank you very much. Alright, so at this point, I will open up the, this meeting for the public hearing, so if you have a question, concern, consideration, please identify yourself, let Julie know, and she'll call you. Thank you.
Hello?
Hello?
Yeah, my name is Steve Flanagan, and I own property a little bit to the north of that. And I would say to you that anybody who's ever tried to make a right, a left turn to the east off of Lakeview to Metropolitan knows it's very difficult now with the traffic count on, I'm sorry, not Metropolitan, Eisenhower. Very difficult with the traffic count there. Not only that, but Lakeview won't support any more traffic unless you make improvements all the way to Muncie. And this will, and this will bring up on a lot of traffic in addition to what's already on Lakeview, and it currently isn't regulated. The, and if you want to put a traffic light there, then that just further congests Eisenhower. Then I have a question or an issue about stormwater. Most of that area has got underground springs in it. And since I and my neighbor own the watershed acreage to the west and to the north of it, I'm concerned about what happens with stormwater impact on the springs and underground surface water, underground, yeah. And so I'd like to see that plan. And I'm concerned the fact, by the fact that there is commercial property available across the street that has been vacant since it was built. And those lots that are east of the proposed Culvers site, I think you said were zoned R1 through 9. And when you put a business, a restaurant, right across the street from it, what's that going to do to those property values in the future? And that's the sum of my questions and comments.
Alright, thank you very much, sir. Questions for this gentleman? Okay. I mean, I think, I think that, well, not many, at least with regards to traffic, that might be addressed if the traffic study is done, and we take a look at all of the traffic along Eisenhower in both directions in that.
Correct. And I do understand that part of the project will be, will include improving Lakeview at least to the northern boundary of this property. There's no plans at this point to improve Lakeview north of that, but there will be some improvements to Lakeview adjacent to this property with this development.
Yeah, I think, I think that's probably one of the few things I could see wrong, is just that, the traffic piece. As Eisenhower gets built up, you know, you're going to have more, more traffic and more traffic headaches.
And then with regards to...
I'd like to see an impact plan on this whole project.
Have we...
I'm sorry, what was that?
I think he wants to see an impact, in our impact plan for this project.
What type of impact plan?
Environmental.
Our Public Works Department does not require that.
You're going to have a real water issue.
Yep, and those stormwater issues are addressed with our Public Works Department.
Yeah. I mean, the applicant, as he develops this, is required to ensure that he manages the runoff from the storm, and my assumption would be that he's going to have to tie into the existing watershed, and, I mean, at that point, we probably need to address if there's any concerns.
Correct. Any development, as it's developed, that stormwater has to be designed and reviewed with our Public Works Department, and essentially, it's not allowed to impact any surrounding property. They have to deal with it on their property. They can't affect anything surrounding that. And again, that's handled through that stormwater system design with our Public Works Department.
Thank you. Any other citizen wishing to comment? I thought the, the owners of the...
Yes, I'd like...
Sure, go ahead, sorry.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, committee members. I'm Bernie Verstow, 16853 Stranger Road, Leavenworth. My wife Linda and sister-in-law Deborah Howard own the adjacent property north of this subject property. I realize when Julie spoke about the city not really having any responsibility to the agreement, I have a few notes that I would like to present. When purchased in 1949, the applicant's parents, Arthur and Lucille Yon, were parties to a deed restriction agreement, which restricts the use of certain aspects of four acres of the subject property. The four acres are the, is the property, first property legally described in the notice. It fronts on Lakeview Drive, and it's part of the 6.3 acre, 6.3 acre north parcel. We're all, our property is also bound by restrictions set forth in the agreement. In Mr. Yon's autobiography entitled "Looking Back to 1915, Completed in 2000 and Housed in the Reference Section of the Leavenworth Library," Mr. Yon details this deed and restriction while describing his past personal and business real estate transactions. Also, he states that while discussing with a Realtor the possibility of selling his adjoining properties for development, he made clear the importance to he and his wife of maintaining his four-acre home site as residential. That's the home that is on the site presently. We've maintained a cordial relationship with one of the applicants over the years as the subject property has been for sale, and are not averse to the applicant's changing opportunities. However, the current deed restrictions afford us an opportunity to protect the utility and the aesthetic integrity of our property now and in the future, but we would ask that the 6.3 acre parcel be excluded from rezoning at this time. As Mr. Flanagan brought up, also, Lakeview Drive is a quiet... Traffic flow and backup traffic through this residential area can negatively impact the safety and the character of the neighborhood and warrants further consideration. So I agree with Mr. Flanagan that there do need, need to be some more studies. And my last note is, the Planning Commission's April 9th notice to neighboring property owners in it, it states, quote, "This notice does not directly involve your property," unquote. That appears inaccurate to us. If rezoning to General Business District occurs, it...
Thank you, sir. Questions for the last speaker? Alright, appreciate it. Anyone else out there have a comment?
Yes, my name is, my, good evening. My name is Elsa Cerber, and I've never joined a meeting like this before, but I'm happy I did this evening. I live on 492 Drive, have been owner of this property for the last 25 years almost, and I oppose, or I agree with both gentlemen with what they've presented. I also foresee a lot of possible accidents down by, on Eisenhower with a profit, with the business being built there. It makes no sense to me personally, with no sense to anyone, why we would want that property be a business area when it's clearly where it's a family, most of on the street are family residents, and it takes about sometimes five to 10 minutes to take a right turn right now to, to get on the highway, or on the left, or vice versa. So I am grateful to the two gentlemen who have presented the case. I completely understand and agree with them. I was unaware of that, what Mr. Yon presented at the time, but it seemed to have been a very good idea passed in order to assist with the future. So thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Other comments, considerations, folks?
Okay, I think Michelle Burns was representing the current owners. Ms. Burns, I didn't know if you had any, anything you wanted to add?
Hello?
Okay, was there someone else that wanted to speak?
Is everything?
Hot mic, hot mic.
I can hear you, Henry.
Can you hear me? Hi, Stephen. My name is Henry Green, and I'm also a neighbor on Lakeview Drive, and I want to incorporate what my neighbors have just said. And I agree with everything they said, that this development could be a great disadvantage to our neighborhood, and I support them in what they said. And I don't want to belabor this. I do not think this development is good for this particular area.
Okay, Mr. Green, we need your address for the record. Mr. Green, what is your address? We need that for the record.
Alright, sir, thank you for your comments.
Henry, I think, I think we could hear you, but I don't believe that the commission can.
No, I don't think so either. I think we're out.
Yeah, I was waiting for them to, after Elsa spoke, to say if anyone else had anything to say.
Yeah, we can hear you all.
Yeah, I think, I think we're locked out right now. I'm just going to hold on.
Okay.
We just need your address, Mr. Green.
Strange. We need your address. Oh, just there's something.
My address is 2818 Lakeview Drive.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Green.
Alright, anyone else out there would like to make a comment?
They said they can hear all of us speaking.
I'm wondering if they can hear us at all, though.
Can you?
Is something on, right?
No, the...
Ask if they can hear us. Is that still on?
It's still on, well, the microphone's still working.
Can someone confirm they hear us?
In the chat.
Yeah.
Oh, we can hear all of them.
Can you hear us speaking? Can anybody hear us?
Well, if we can hear that, then we should...
Yeah, I'm not sure, since we can hear them...
If they can hear us, I don't know.
Did they mute us?
Oh, are they unmute?
Are we unmuted?
We, we control mute and unmute.
Yeah, they don't control that.
Yeah.
Are you going through computer audio or anything?
On their end.
Nothing's changed.
Yeah.
It's odd, they dropped that in the middle.
Yeah. Alright, we'll hold for a technical check.
Mic!
Yes. That's a line.
Wrong line.
Yeah, we don't use the audio through the computer, that's the audio, so...
You're highlighted on phone right now, and it says audio is off on phone.
Yeah, because we called in on that, so that's how we can hear them.
Henry, I sent a chat that we're not able to hear the committee, but we can hear each other.
Oh, thanks.
I don't think your chat went through.
They can see the chat.
They can see the chat.
Yeah, they can see the chat.
Some of them can, some of them can't.
They don't know where to look.
It's all working.
Yeah, nothing is...
Nothing's changed in the past two minutes.
They're working on it, they said.
Julie, you can start shorthand. This is what we're saying.
Oh, okay.
Alright, so do we believe that they can hear us? They can't.
I don't think they can hear us.
Uh-oh.
Sorry, that's me.
So can Steve Flanagan hear us? Because didn't he, couldn't he hear us at one point?
Yeah, because he started talking. I'm wondering if it's something with the phones.
Did, did you all hear that when he stated that, I'm sure you did, that there was, there was a, a, a kind of note already made not to, not to make it residential? Is that, did you hear that, or was, am I mistaken?
Yes, we heard that.
I didn't hear that. Did you?
No.
No, I think he said that Mr. Yon had made something, stated something. Yes, we heard. They sent a note.
I think they had a note talking about how they restricted use, Elsa.
Exactly, Henry. Henry, that's where they cannot make...
On the four-acre house site. That, that's where they want to put the Culvers.
It's down in the corner, is it not?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Which is going to be difficult for any car to exit and take a right or a left turn. And, and, and I'm already seeing possible accidents there. It's going to be a mess.
Ladies and gentlemen, can you hear us all?
Going north to get out of it, especially during busy times, like after work time and in the morning.
Yeah, you're right, Elsa.
Try and hang that up and then re-dial in.
I saw the city said they already had the note restriction.
Oh. Oh.
Yeah, something up in the right-hand corner.
Okay, I'm going to ask everyone to mute, okay?
Okay.
Yeah.
No, just hold on.
That's the conversation out there in the community.
Okay. Let me tell them we're in a-
I'm, I'm going to, can we do a bathroom break while we do this?
You can go ahead.
Breaking into my rendition of Monday, Monday.
It's been a Monday.
All day, all day.
Please enter your access code followed by the pound or hash. To enable audio controls, please enter your audio PIN followed- This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, can you all hear us?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna ask everybody to, I'm gonna ask everybody to mute yourselves again so that we can continue the planning commission discussion. Okay.
All right, so, yeah, if you're folks out there in radio land, if you go ahead and mute yourself, please, so that- And if there is anybody else out there that has anything that they would like to add at this time, I'll give you about 10 seconds.
Hi, my name's Michelle Burns, and I'm the attorney for the current property owner.
Your address, please?
And they're on here, and they, oh, I'm sorry, 4630 West 137th Street in Leewood, Kansas.
Thank you.
And I represent the daughters of Mr. Yon, who previously owned the property, and they have now owned it. It has been vacant since 2007. I think between the staff and the developer, it has been made clear that the rezoning of this property to the proposed rezoning category meets all of the golden criteria and that, that is required by state statutes and state laws. I mean, even just in the staff report, you know, it talks about the properties to the north being the first residential property is 565 feet from this property line. There is an existing restriction agreement, and that is one there. This rezoning really shouldn't take that into account, and that is something that will be dealt with, you know, when and if that portion of the property, a development plan comes into place for that. But I think based upon the criteria, the surrounding uses, and what the Development Review Committee has set forth from previous meetings that will require the developer to do traffic impact stormwater, and all of those are things that, you know, the city will make sure done appropriately, but really are not a factor to be taken into account with this rezoning. And the owners of this property, Ms. Nurse, Ms. Lynch, Ms. Demet, and Ms. Harrison all support this rezoning of their family property. That's all I have.
Thank you. Questions for this? Any questions for the floor? All right, one more shot. Anyone out there has anything else they would like to add at this time, please? As such, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Commissioners, any thoughts, or what are your thoughts about this issue, recommendation?
Just the thoughts of, you know, I'm thinking future, you know, future development. I mean, again, like I've already stated, that traffic is gonna be, be a big, big concern. But we, we'll have to address that when we get there.
I'd venture to say it's probably the highest traffic in our, in our town already.
Eisenhower, yeah, it's probably up there.
Probably by far, so.
For sure.
I don't see certainly a near-term increase in traffic issues between Walmart and, and Fourth Street, just because of a rezoning. While I hear issues with the Lakeview Drive, I do, I do hear that, and I know that it's difficult to get onto Eisenhower. And, and I would assume that would be looked at and worked with and addressed at some point.
Right.
When it became detrimental to the, to the city, so.
I mean, especially when you look at what was a couple of months ago, when we were talking about that down on the other side of this property by Dillons, where they were talking about, so I, I see growth going along these undeveloped areas along Eisenhower. And so clear, I mean, I think all of the dry, all the traffic on Eisenhower's gonna have to be looked at as these new divisions come in.
Yeah, Eisenhower is currently being widened west of here, once you get past 10th Street. So that's currently being addressed, you know, to, to handle that increase in volume, so.
I also have a traffic concern, but I also think about that empty strip mall that's across, and that just keeps, you know, going into my brain right now. And that is, been sitting there for a pretty long time, and there's really just a restaurant over there.
From investment companies.
Yeah, that's in the city of Leavenworth.
But still, I mean, it's not, yeah, it's not a bad point.
Yeah, it's in the city.
It's privately owned, and it's my understanding that lease rates there are-
Oh, really?
They are, they're pretty high.
Unaffordable.
Yeah, and the, the folks that own it are well-off enough that they can let it sit vacant.
I will say, over the last several months, there have been more, more businesses put into that.
Yes, smaller.
So that looks promising. But, but we're not here to throw me out, not discussing that.
This is, this is the way Leavenworth can grow. There's not much more room for growth along Fourth Street. There, it's pretty well occupied unless you start tearing out the number of houses that there are along Fourth Street. I'm just a banker, but I, I think this is a great move for, for the city. I, I, I understand the concerns of the, the neighboring properties, but overall, from the city's standpoint, I think it, it is a great move.
Okay, good. All right, if there are no other comments, we-
Can I ask?
No, sorry.
Can I ask?
I'm sorry, the public hearing is closed. If you have a question, if you want to type it in, we might consider it. Thank you.
But I will piggyback on that as well. You know, adding to the restaurants in Leavenworth is greatly appreciated. I will say that.
My ultimate goal of our strategic plan moving forward is to keep business here, so we can, we can drive the legends and go to Culver's.
Check. We won't have to drive the plat, sorry.
Yeah, or we can, yeah.
All right, so essentially, we have three options. We can recommend approval of the rezoning request from R1-TAC 9 to GBD. We can recommend denial of the rezoning request, or we could table the issue for additional information slash consideration. I'll let the, the person online who said she had a question, I'll give her a couple of more seconds to type that question in for us. All right, it's not forthcoming. If there's an issue, remember you have, you know, you have 14 days to come back to us, to the city regarding our particular vote. So I will take a motion for, for this particular rezoning request.
From R19 to GBD for the 5136 Lakeview.
Thank you, second?
I second.
All right, we have time. All right, all in favor, right hand, please? Oppose, we, or no opposed, all right, so the motion is passed.
Okay, so again, as with the others, this begins the 14-day protest petition period, and then this will be heard by the City Commission on Tuesday, May 25th.
All right, next item, 2021 TAC 1A SUV, preliminary plat, and then we also have the final plat for the property that we've just talked, or the rezoning that we've just approved. Staff report, please. Anything, I'm sorry.
Okay, let me, so, again, these are the associated preliminary and final plats. I'll just discuss them together since they are identical. It just did require a preliminary and final, since this is dedicating utilities, and so we have to kind of go through both of these steps for that. So, again, this is the 11.8 acre lot, which we just discussed for the rezoning. The plat shows this being divided into two separate lots. Lot one will be for the Culver's development. The remainder of it will be parzelled off into one lot, and then the intent is, as that's developed in the future, future users will come back and replat out whatever portion they want of that. So as other users come back, you will see additional plats for this come back to you to parcel off additional sections for additional users in the future. So, again, this was reviewed at the April 15th Development Review Committee meeting. There were no issues identified with the plats. The, the issues that we talked about before were related to the overall development, but not related to the actual plats themselves. So, again, this is the preliminary and final plat. If you have any questions for me, I can answer those.
So, we're now gonna call this Eisenhower Marketplace?
Yes.
My assumption is that-
Yeah, that is the name of the plat.
Okay, so it won't be Lakeview anymore, got it. All right, questions? Concerns? All right, so we have three options. We can approve the preliminary plat and the final plat. We can deny the preliminary and the final plat, or we could table the issue for additional information slash considerations.
We'll just need two separate motions, so one for the preliminary and one for the final.
All right, let's try to save time, my apologies.
Yeah, no, you're fine, gotta keep it in the book, so.
So, I'll accept a motion one way or the other.
I'll make a motion for the preliminary plat.
To approve the preliminary plat?
Correct.
For 2021 TAC 18-SUV, thank you very much, a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor, right hand, please? Thank you, all unanimous. Shall we go to the final plat? Which is, where is that? 2021 TAC 17-TAC SUV, final plat. Since it's exactly the same-
I'll make the subsequent motion.
All right, so, all right, so motion to accept the, to approve the final plat, second?
Second.
All right, all raising, I'll approve right hand, nay? All right, this passed unanimously, thank you very much. Last item, which is also a public hearing, so we can open it back up.
We can't see your pictures, can you tell us what the vote was?
Yeah, we have-
It was five to zero in favor of both plats.
All right.
Thank you. All right, the last item for tonight is text amendments of the development regulations.
Okay, so this is our annual review of the development regulations. So again, as we review, as we use these every year, there are minor things that come up that just need to be adjusted or modified, sometimes-
All right, a motion has been made, seconded?
I second.
All right, show of hands, approval, yea? Nay? All right, vote is five to one, five to one. All right, so a motion is passed. Remember, folks, if you're listening and you have an issue with our decision, remember you can go ahead and appeal it, you have 14 days.
Yep, and so this will begin the 14-day protest petition period as mandated by Kansas State statute, and then this will be heard by the City Commission on Tuesday, May 25th at 7:00 PM here. And those meetings do allow in-person participation as well as the go-to meetings, so.
Very good. All right, if we could have the staff report on 2021 TAC 08-